Related to the planning for the enhanced facility for the DPW is not even close to this industry standard. The choice of the century brass site as the destination appears to have been made by Mayor Pratt Murphy with the justification being we own it, so that's where they should go. That decision has shaped the follow-up conversations. And despite the despite the decision never having received the appropriate scrutiny, to the best of my knowledge, none of the standard planning process has occurred. What has happened instead are private conversations between the mayor and Jack Healy with no community involvement. The town of Ridgefield and the town of Brookfield have both established committees to follow the steps I have mentioned regarding the planning for the respective public safety facilities. I suggest that in the long-term interests of the town, the current conversations be stopped and restarted once a committee representing the community which can result which can consult with experts with experience in planning large capital projects has been has been created and begins its work. Without this community-based effort to address the DPW's needs and those of any other group to be located at the same site, there is no basis for the approval of any funding for the work related to this effort. The town cannot afford the mismanagement of this effort. Thank you.
Ms. Eaton.
Hi, everyone. Jackie Eaton, Rhode Island. Thank you for the opportunity, as always, to make comments. Much appreciated. So tonight, I'm going to talk about that I believe that all politics are local and what happens in Washington affects us here. The Republicans' budget bill will make 600 people in New Milford lose healthcare coverage and another 1,676 people will be burdened with much higher premiums. Another 1,050 of our New Milford residents will lose Medicaid coverage. So that's 1,650 New Milford residents who will lose health insurance completely and every person and business's health insurance rates will go up. The source is the Connecticut Mirror, September 5th and 10th. Then there's the Republican administration's assault on due process that has already reached us here. Human beings are being snatched off the street in Danbury and disappeared by masked, unidentified, and armed people without warrants and without the fundamental American right to due process. When ICE meets their quota in Danbury, or maybe when they're just bored, you don't think they're coming here? The majority of these immigrants are hard-working, tax-paying, and court-compliant people who were on the only path to citizenship allowed to them. No human being is illegal. The demonization of human beings and the constant lies being told by the Republican administration are creating a narrative that is normalizing the horror of what is happening in this country and in Danbury. People in our group, Act Local, are there every day witnessing it, the horrors of people being snatched from their families with no warrant. They're being kidnapped. Anyway, our taxpayer dollars are funding these horrific kidnappings and at the same time we are about to kick people off Medicaid and lose any chance at affordable healthcare. So I ask this council again, not just for me, but for the hundreds of people who stand with me in protest, because it matters who represents us here at home. Do you support what the Republican administration is doing? Do you believe what the Republicans are falsely spreading right now, that I'm a dangerous terrorist equal to ISIS? Is that who you see standing here? Because I'm protesting this administration? That I am a paid protester? That I have nothing better to do on my Saturdays? I can't cut my lawn, I can't go see my grandkids, I'm standing up for democracy every week? Am I a paid protester? I don't, you know, if you believe that, I've got a bridge in Brooklyn. The people who rally with me, they're your neighbors. They're your neighbors. They're veterans. They're seniors. They're teachers. They're engineers. These are your neighbors that are protesting every week. Do you believe what the administration is spewing about us? That we are really dangerous terrorists? So I do feel that it is your duty as elected officials to disclose how you feel. And if you support or reject what this Republican administration is doing to us and to our country, I also feel very strongly that silence is compliance in these really scary times. Thank you.
Mike.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, the council. Michael Edward Erickson, 65 Buckingham Road. The Board of Ed is requesting $1.5 million from the Board of Education Capital Reserve Fund to build additional office space. Does the Board of Ed have a plan to build the proposed office space? I did not get the impression from the last town council meeting that they did. Part of the requested money is for a plan. How do taxpayers, the Board of Ed, the town council, the Board of Finance know what the cost is without design plans? Blamey giving the Board of Ed $1.5 million is like giving a child the key to the candy store. Go spend it and have fun. As a taxpayer, I find this financially irresponsible to give the Board of Ed a blank check to do what they want. We're not known the accurate cost of the of the office space. This is taxpayers' money, not the Board of Education's money. I, as a taxpayer, went to ensure that it is spent wisely and not wasted. The Board of Education needs to desperately to maintain the Board of Ed buildings. There are schools with crumbling sidewalks, which is a safety issue. The ground light at the high school flagpole has not worked in how many years? Hold the Board of Ed accountable for the taxpayers' dollar. Let's not forget the poor condition they left East Street and John Pettibone Schools when they moved out. The Board of Ed has what I call OPM, other people's money mindset. Thank you.
Ms. Brianna.
Hi there. Adrian Bigelow Kern, 76 Second Hill Road. Good evening, members of the town council. I'd like to talk tonight about potential critical issues that could impact our community, especially in light with all the budget cuts that are happening throughout our our government. So first, I would really love to just understand from the council if you guys are aware of those federal cuts and how they're going to impact our town, specifically thinking about the library. The library is such an important part of New Milford. I mean, just a few years ago, we've, you know, built it back up and beautified it, all of that, the information, the programs that we have. So what are those impacts going to come to us? Additionally, New Milford Hospital, as time goes on, all the talks about hospitals closing and things like that, will that also impact us? FEMA, I think we can see that throughout the country, Alaska and the different things. And we know we've had crises throughout here as well. Will that impact us? Veteran Services, another piece, just as all these cuts are happening, how does this impact us? And I would just love to know from you guys kind of what the things are that are coming and how we are going to handle that as well. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I don't have anybody else, Ms. Ma'am.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, yes, I'd like to first add to the agenda, item 4C, which would be regarding a grant from the Internet Crimes Against Children for the New Milford Police Department.
So you're making a motion to suspend the rules to add that, correct?
Yes.
To be accepted to the grant? Okay. Any discussion, all's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, I'd like to add to the agenda, item 4C, the aforementioned New Milford Police Department Award for $2,000 for the Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion, all's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
That was easy. Okay, so we'll move forward to items 4A and B. I'd like to move that we approve those. That's the consent, I'm sorry, it's the prior minutes in the tax collector.
Any discussion?
Sir, second.
Thank you. Alex, second. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any extensions?
You're next. Mayor's comments.
Okay. We have to do 4C? You added it to the agenda?
Oh, I'm sorry. I read it. Okay, I'm sorry, I already read it and I thought I did it. Oh, boy. Okay, so now, I would like to move that we, item 4C, that we approve the request from the New Milford Police Department to accept $2,000 from the Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force. These would be used to assist in the purchase of the Shadow Dragon, a data-mining software that supports investigations into online and sexual exploitation of children. In addition, this software will enhance the capabilities in a wide range of other investigations. And their requesting are okay.
And we just got this today, it was just approved, so the chief had asked if we could add this to the agenda. And you see the memo from Chief Seruto there for the acceptance of the award. So we have a motion and then we have a second.
Any further discussion, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any extensions? Thank you.
All right, so we're done with number four. It's up to you now. Mayor's comments.
Okay. So real quick, on some infrastructure updates, on Upland Road, we're doing a big drainage project before we mill and pave it. We continue with the cross pipes and swales. They're going to finish the cross pipes tomorrow, weather-dependent, and then they'll do the last few swales. And then, within, I believe, next week, or the week following, all weather-dependent, they'll start the mill and pave on Upland Road. Lanesville Firehouse, the contractors continue to excavate the western property lines. They poured the extended concrete foundation. They're also continuing to install the steel framing to the interior of the existing firehouse. We're also working on Tamarack Road, that's a mill and pave for a portion of it. And that is from North Road to the Culvert. And we're hoping that to get completed by the end of next week, and that's weather permitting on that. Sand Bridge Road, or the Sand Road Bridge, we're continuing to work on that bridge and the contractor installed the rebarb for the new southern abutment today, so they're moving forward. We talked about due to the fact that the utilities didn't move the poles, I think it was about five or six weeks of a delay just between each one of both Frontier and Eversource. It pushed us back. That bridge will not be completed until the spring, but we will have it open for the winter. New Milford Police Department Statistics, real quick, on traffic is so far motor vehicle stops. In the year 2023, this time in 2023, we did 2,330. Last year, we did 2,892. This year, we did 4,105. So a big thank you to the New Milford Police Department for their continued, creating the awareness and really trying to tamp down those speeds and aggressive driving, especially on Route 7. It also goes with motor vehicle accidents. In the year 2020, in the year 2023, we had 909, with 138 in parking lots. Last year, we had 707 with 105. This year so far, same time, year-to-date, 690. So that is down 17, but we have 129 in parking lots. So you would add in the differential for talking about just road accidents, it's a pretty significant reduction. And a big thank you to the police department for that and the public at large, for really, as we've talked about each and every time at town council, the two main things we can do that cause the most accidents, first is driving too close. You can just make sure that you drive the proper distance from the vehicle in front of you. That will help drive down traffic accidents as well as distracted driving. DUIs in the year 2024 was 52. We're seeing a big uptick in that. That's, 2025 is 70. So we've seen a big increase. Part of that could be due to the extra enforcement that we're doing. We did do a DUI check, we're probably going to be another one, do another one for the holidays as well. So then lastly, event-wise, Katie, got some cool things going on. We are, Harryburg Park is having their haunted trail. They started on Saturday, I believe they had 700 and some guests there. They're also going to do Friday and Saturday of this coming week, Friday and Saturday of the next week. You can go to their website and you can purchase your tickets there. On Serenoble this Friday is having 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. The PTO is having their haunted harvest for youngsters. They're going to have face painting, music, food trucks on October 17th. Also, the Youth Advisory Board is here, they're actually having, it comes to present to the councils, actually having the teen movie night, Annabelle, that's for grades nine through 12, that's at Len Demming. Then on October 18th, 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at Litchfield Crossings is the New Milford Food Truck Festival and Touch a Truck Event. So that'd be great for the youngsters to come down. That's the Saturday, 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. The New Milford High School, 4:00 p.m., which actually starts at 6:30 p.m., is having their Athletic Hall of Fame Awards. And also 7:00 p.m. at the Danbury Ice Arena, great to live in New Milford night, Danbury Trashers Hockey Night, where we are going to be honoring some great community members as well. Also Saturday, Katie, New Milford Dog Park, we're having the Dog Park's Halloween Event, which is great, dogs get all dressed up.
The dogs are going to get dressed up?
Yep, and we get to judge who's the best-dressed pup.
You do that?
Yep, that's fun.
Okay, then. Is your dog going to be in this contest?
No. No, my dog's, wouldn't be that happy being dressed.
And you think all the other ones are?
I think they are.
Okay.
I see, I go, it's very nice. October 19th, Don Clady is doing his car show, which is Sunday, at Pettibone. And then October 24th, at Gallery 25, starting at 7:00 p.m., there's Sip and Pour Event. Then on the 25th, at 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. on the Southern Green, is the Halloween on the Green. It's for their younger kids, there'll be pumpkins in the windows of participating store owners. We also do our Halloween Parade, we go around the green for the youngsters as well. On October 25th, 3:00 p.m., Faith Church is doing their carnival. I believe they're having a 70-foot Ferris wheel. And they're going to have fireworks, so yeah, they're going to have fireworks, a bunch of other stuff. And then October 26th, 5:30 p.m., 7:30 p.m., Trunk or Treat. And then Animal Welfare Society, Katie, is doing a groovy celebration, Saturday, November 1st, from 12:30 p.m. to 3:30 p.m. That's at the Silo. They're going to celebrate 60 years of the Animal Welfare Society serving the community. There's going to be a grazing board for food, refreshments, raffle baskets, door prizes, a 50-50 raffle. And they say, wear your hippest outfit because it's 60's.
Got to dress like you.
60's era. And for more information, you can go to www.AWS/shelter.org, and I'll push this out on our sites as well. So they do such a wonderful thing. And full disclosure, I got one of my dogs from there.
The one who doesn't want to put on a costume?
Yep. And it was a great rescue.
He's a smart dog.
She, and it was from Puerto Rico, which is a rescue from the hurricane.
Isn't that nice?
Absolutely. Great dog.
Very nice. Bill said?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Well, we have a chance for our police chief to come and join us and tell us soon about the school zones and anything that, what they're doing with that.
I'm actually asking him to come to the next town council meeting.
Okay, that's great. And they also did the stops, was a couple weeks ago. I'm curious to hear the results of that specifically, because, you know.
Absolutely. I'm also, I'm sorry, Alex, I'm also asking DPW to come to talk about the traffic light. We're looking at late spring next year for the install. Hopefully, the grant will be completed by then. And then some of the other major projects that we're working on, which is the East Street School, I mean, I'm sorry, the East Street and the, oh my gosh, the intersection, right where the hospital is? Thank you. So we're widening that one, and then the Pumpkin Hill and Still River. So they're going to give us updates on all that, as well as the grant funding for Wellsville and for Mary Albrook.
Great. I was on Route 7 today while the school zone lights were flashing, slowed down, flying by me, car after car after car.
Yep. They'll pay attention.
So, I mean, you can see those lights.
Absolutely. And it's a, I believe, right, Randy, it's like a $400 ticket or something?
Well, I think it's $400.
When the lights are flashing.
Yeah, it's happening around there, too.
So we'll have him at the next meeting.
We'd like to, I think we should hear.
Absolutely.
Yeah, definitely. All righty, ready? You done? Okay. Moving on to item 6A, B, and C. I think it's okay to do these together. If anybody doesn't like it, let me know. For item 6A, I'd like to move to approve the following road closures requested by Parks and Rec. They want permission to close Main Street and the crossovers to Church, Bank, Whittlesey Avenue, and Boardman Terrace from 3:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. on Sunday, October 26th. That's the 2025 Annual New Milford Trunk or Treat. Item 6B, the Women's Club of Greater New Milford requests permission to close the Southern Crossover from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on November 1st for Operation Thanksgiving Holiday Food Drive. And item 6C, William Buckley, Buck B. is asking permission to close Youngsfield Road on November 29th, 2025, from 9:15 a.m. to 11:15 a.m. for the annual Santa Run. Thank you.
Any discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any extensions? Thank you.
Item 7, I'd like to move that we approve the request from Social Services to accept a monetary donation in the amount of $1,875 from the 2025 Archbishop's Annual Appeal through its vicarate, vicarate outreach program, excuse me if I don't say that right. This donation will be deposited into the New Milford Farmers Market Collaborative Fund, which will help SNAP recipients with their market coins at the market.
Any discussion? And a big thank you to them. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any extensions? Thank you.
Item 8, I'd like to move to approve the following appointments for the Zoning Commission, James E. Valinsky Jr. Zoning Commission, it'll be a regular seat in that.
Alternate seat.
It does not say that.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, I've got my glasses on the wrong way. Okay, so it's an alternate position for James E. Valinsky Jr., and his term would be October 14th, 2025, to January 31st, 2026. The next item is the Zoning Board of Appeals. This is an alternate position for Douglas Stephen Cherniski, and his term would be October 14th, 2025, to January 31st, 2028.
Thank you, Doug, second. Any discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Thank you.
Okay, I need new glasses. Item number 9, I'd like to move to approve the transfer of $61,660. This is from our tax assessor, from contingency account number 1098000058900, as follows: $22,160 into Assessor's Office M&amp;S Account, which would be 1041310056001, $15,000 into the Computer Software Account, 1041310057350, and $24,500 into the Personnel Account, number 1041310051000, to provide additional funding needed due to the implementation of the Homestead exemption ordinance.
Any discussion? We have a second from Paul.
Paul?
Alex?
We spoke about this already.
Yes.
But I'm thinking, if by chance, the decision is later on, this is not something that's working for us, all these software updates, et cetera, do we know if those then become part of our system and will work for us or something we're going to have to lose? Like, the money we're spending.
Right.
I know the part-time person's one thing, but everything else...
Right, right. So the software, they would, you know, they're going to start working on that. So it's more of a one-time fee to help us implement the the Homestead exemption. So basically, they're going to try to automate as much for us as they can. So going forward, we wouldn't be paying any more maintenance on that.
But is there, can you have a use, I think I understand what you're asking, is there a use for this, these items that are put into the software if the Homestead thing isn't done?
Right, so the Homestead is not fully implemented, you know, we can't wait until February. Right, so they're going to start working on it.
So, but does any of this do any dual work? You know, is it something you could use later, like M&amp;S account or personnel account, you know, the computer software account? Whatever is put into the software, could it be used, is it useful to you after, if you didn't do Homestead?
No, no, because what they're programming is strictly for the exemption.
So would there be a cost to remove it?
So, we would, the way they've explained it to me thus far, it'd be a batch type of program, one-time update. So it's out there, it's available, it's an optional program to run, and then if we don't don't use it, then, you know, we've paid to have that part of the software. But beyond that, there wouldn't be any, if we decided not to use it, we wouldn't be continuing to pay for it in the future. So I think the, you know, there are other towns that are going to be looking at this. And so it's not going to be like a wasted, I don't think, in my opinion, you know, it's not going to be a totally wasted effort for the company either, because there may be other towns that try to implement something similar.
So are you anticipating new items for the next budget?
Not, not at the moment, no, no.
So there will be no additional requests for the next budget with regard to this change?
No, a lot of this is mailings, right? So, yeah, and some staff to help, right, that's it, you know, it'll be, it's all just a one-time thing. And then beyond that, it might, if we can, if we implement the Homestead and then we notify new owners, is this going to marginally increase maybe supply, because we'll have to do some additional mailings, you know, at 50 cents, probably 150, I'm talking $150 a year, you know, so to notify potential new exemption applicants.
And you don't anticipating adding personnel beyond this?
No, nope.
Just one more question. Is there, if the Homestead exemption didn't go through, right, so you have this, is anything that they put in the software, would it complicate anything that you currently use or impede anything that's in there, or does it just sit there?
It would just be out there.
Like so many things?
Yeah, there's, right, there's some programs out there within the system that we don't use, that they don't apply to us.
Got it. Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any, thank you.
Item time, 9B, I'd like to move to approve the job description for the Homestead clerk.
So this is a pretty much...
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. And Brian's going to talk about this as well. As we talked about before, because of the need of all of the mailings that we're going to do, he'd requested, which is what we just approved, for two part-time people. And Brian had asked that one be designated a regular and then a junior. So here's the job description for junior, that we can talk about the same thing, but Brian, can you talk a little bit about?
Sure.
The difference?
Yeah, so the basic difference is the Homestead clerk would be more of a somewhat supervisor to the junior clerk. There's going to be a lot of mail and applications coming in. There's going to be a lot of mail and applications coming in. We're trying to implement an online application to avoid the amount of paper coming through the, through the door. So if we can find someone that's got some tax office experience, that would be ideal. And that they'll be able to jump in and use various pieces of software that, that we current, that my current, that our current staff uses in terms of verifying motor vehicles, driver's licenses, ownership. They've got familiarity with the soft. That person would have familiarity with the software that we use to verify the information coming in. And then we would have a junior clerk that would be more pushing paper to the senior, to the, to the homestead clerk and to me for follow-ups. So that's basically the difference in the two jobs. Yes.
So do we have to add supervising the junior clerk onto the job description?
What we're doing here is basically the junior clerk would forward information to the homestead clerk in terms of the applications that they feel.
Does the homestead clerk need an addition to that job description because they're supervising somebody?
They, I don't look at this as having, you know, a direct supervisory because I'll be there and the other staff. But only to the extent of making sure that they're processed, that we're processing the workload that's coming in, you know, and that we have it organized for follow-up or for potential approval.
So organizing and keeping the flow of what needs to be done would be one of the major tasks?
Right, yeah.
Maybe I missed it. It says seasonal, so what does that mean?
So this is a part-time thing, so we'll be starting next week with, I should mention, we're mailing out on Friday ten thousand and eighty-seven applications. So that's after we've screened the file for what we think are, for basically all residential property. And.
What day? Is that going to the post office?
It's going to the post office on Friday.
Okay, so nobody go to the post office.
You have one working thirty hours, one working thirty-five.
So, yeah, so basically, talking to Greg, we're looking to work a total of thirty-five between the two clerks. So not, they're both going to be part-time.
Okay.
Yeah. So in essence, it's a total of thirty-five hours for two, for the two. So the two clerks will work a total of thirty-five, but not, neither one is going to work thirty-five. What we're looking at is three days a week for one, two days a week for another.
So you don't run into, having to extend too much.
Seasonal, you mean from, give me like three months?
Yep, starting. So basically, what we're shooting to do is have all these apps processed, exemptions maintained by the end of February. So, you know, I did a quick calculation before I came up. If we get nine thousand applicants and it takes us five minutes, an app, you know, an app to review it, that's forty-five thousand minutes, which equals seven hundred and fifty hours, which equals a hundred and seven days. So, you know, there's twenty-two working days in a month, so we're looking at about four and a half months. And that's kind of ducktails with the end of February, trying to get this done.
Did you do the calculations of what it would cost then for thirty-five?
For the thirty-five hours? Yeah, we're, well, we asked for twenty-four thousand, five hundred.
I'm just double checking the math, that's all. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Brian? We have a motion and a second. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any extensions? Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Brian. All that math, it's time. Item number ten, I'd like to move that we approve the acceptance of six hundred and eighty-three dollars for the mayor's office that was raised in the Weekend in the Life event, which is better known as Gilmore.
The Gilmore Girls, and they have what's called a passport, so those that register to go to the paid functions, where you get the autographs and everything, had a passport where they would go, and those monies, the Weekend in the Life, had given us as a donation to the town. So six hundred and eighty-three dollars, that will go into the account for helping those that need equipment for youth sports and maybe need a scholarship, so that will go into that fund. And do we have a second? Second, my Paul. Any discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any extensions? Thank you.
And there's a page that isn't on here, and I think it's item eleven. Are we done? We need an adjournment. It's not there. Item eleven, I'm making it up.
There you go, Sal.
There you go.
Page was second, all's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.